Okay, I'll call Lewiston City Council to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Clara is here with us tonight. She's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Clara, when you're ready. Thank you Clara. We'll see you again in just a couple of minutes. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please let me your remarks to three minutes. And with that, I will open up the citizen comments. If there are any tonight, we just need your name and city of residence. We don't need your physical address. Welcome, Misty.
Can you hear me?
No.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Missy McLaughlin, Nespera County Treasurer, and I reside in the county. And why I'm here tonight is to just remind everyone of a couple important things upon us. One is April 15th. That's the deadline for the Circuit Breaker or Property Tax Reduction Program that the state has for people that are pretty much on low income, and they will help subsidize some of your property taxes. They will pay towards the property taxes if you meet this qualif- if you meet these qualifications. One is 65 and older, disabled, recognized by Social Security, married, I mean widow or widower. There's a couple veterans stipulations there, too. It's a great program. I encourage anyone that has anyone in a situation that is on low income that meets one of those, you only have to meet one, to come to the Cessers Office. They assist people signing up for this program. It's a state program, but it's really, really good. There's no strings attached to that one. And so if you know of anyone, please get the word out. And then the other date that I would like to remind everyone, June 20th is coming up. And if you did not pay your property taxes in full in December, they are due June 20th. And I'm sorry that we are in a construction zone. So if you do know someone that likes to come in to the office, please have them come in around the 1st of May, because I know our parking lot is going to get extremely cluttered after that. So if, and if they can't, call me. That's what I encourage. If there's a situation, let me know. We can have deputies go to into the parking lot and assist elders. And with that, we have some information. And any questions?
Thank you, Misty. Yes, sir. Further citizen comments tonight? Okay, we'll move on to number four presentations. Item A, April is Strengthening Families to Prevent Child Abuse Month. Proclamation, I'm going to read that with you, and Clara Blue is going to join me up here in just a minute. She, the Idaho ICPC, I don't know what that stands for, but Courtesy Work and Idaho Coordinator for the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, Division of Family and Community Services. What does ICPC stand for? Wow, that is big business. Okay, Sarah, or Clara, pardon me, if you'd join me over here. Our next item is 4B presentation, Valley Vision Quarterly Progress Report. Receiving a Quarterly Progress Report on the accomplishments and activities of Valley Vision, Inc., from President and CEO Jerry Chavez. Jerry, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Jerry. Last name is Chavez. I'm President and CEO for Valley Vision. Office reason. Hear me?
Might have to speak up just a little bit or get upon a microphone. Is there one right in front of you? No, leave that one there. They've got it all queued in.
Hear me now? And this one, too. Any better?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Well, one of the first things I want to begin. Nation, and I'll be short and sweet. College that I have five board members from Valley Vision here in. Important is what the board members give to the organization of the changes that we see. Vote of confidence and support in approving our contract. With that being said, we are required by our contract to give you to. You'd like to do things a little bit beyond that. So you will discuss before you four times, once a quarter. That in mind, I'm going to go ahead and go through. I pass a lot of this slides. You have it in front of you. You can always call me up and ask me. This slide here is very important because this is Valley Vision does. Focus in on new wealth generators. New wealth generators is another term that we use. Factors. Term is new wealth. So a Clearwater paper is Saffodale, a CC. Wealth generators, wealth in to part of their business. They sell parts and pieces. They sell their product outside the area. And that port that economy is new wealth generation. But what's important about new wealth generation is the amount of business. Factors. So it's over a billion dollars. Or some 5,300 bodies that are in that particular space. Where the manufacturing is the number one employer in the area. Number two is going to probably be healthcare. You see the difference between the employment figures, a billion dollars versus 369. So that's the importance of what our focus is in terms of economic development. I'll advance a slide here. I won't go into a lot of the strategies other than to say that we will be in five markets with five, set with seven different industries prospecting. Prospecting is a term that we use once upon a time here in Idaho, Lewiston, right? We're prospecting. We are looking for companies that are looking to move. Once, so our methodology is once we find somebody, we go set up a meeting, we'll travel to those markets, and then we start the process of shifting information back and forth with the idea that we eventually have to bring them to the valley before we can strike a deal. They have to see that, that all the information that we've sent them is proofed out. And we do such a great job in our site tours. We just had a company from Southern California here about two weeks ago, and we, in this particular setting, in this particular room, we hosted a luncheon, luncheon with about 36 business representative, government officials, entertaining three individuals that were looking to see what we had to offer. They walk away from a site tour very, very impressed. Question last year from Council, Councilmember Spicklemeyer is, how do others feel about the valley when they come here? You know, the valley is a great cell. It is, but we have to still go out there and try and find those individuals. So with that being said, last year, last couple of years, we had 51 meetings, 42 of those were qualified to go against, we actually got a little bit more bang for our dollar, so to speak. We had 18 site tours. We no longer will rely on other people to bring those companies and host them to our community. We go out and find those ourselves. I would hazard to say within the last five years prior to my coming to Valley Vision, we probably didn't have more than maybe 10. I would say even five. So you can see the activity started to increase quite a bit with the idea that once you put a lot of names in the funnel, hopefully one or two of those drop out and land, much like Northwest Forest Slide did about a year and a half ago. So that's, we will go through, I won't spend too much more time other than say in 2025, we had another company that issued us a ALOI, Letter of Intent. Letter of Intent is important. It means that we are trying to negotiate a deal. So you can see every year we've had ALOI, in fact, the one for 2023, we're still negotiating that deal. 2024, we're still negotiating that deal. But, but lo and behold, in 2025, we were just issued an ALOI last week from that same company we hosted. And, and one nuance to that, if I can share, in December, that company didn't know of the LC Valley, nor did we know of them. So that's how quick these, these things can happen. So you can see, I just, I'll be in Toronto, California, Arizona, Canada, coming up. This is our book of business. This, I'm actually showing you a peek behind the curtain. Those are our, we've sanitized it. We kicked the names out, so we want to be a little bit confidential in nature. But you can see the site tours that are being planned. You can see our hot list, how many companies are on that hot list, how many are active. Hot lists are, we're trying to bring those companies to site tours so we can get them to an ALOI, and then we can work towards negotiating a deal. But that's my book of business. We are a sales company. Have to build the book of business to generate activity. I'll, I'll spend a little bit of time on business retention and expansion. We actually had two of our city leadership in our bear function, right? Business Retention and Expansion Survey. We're getting ready to release those findings, or what did our business community say about doing business on a day-to-day basis here in the LC Valley? So we had a, we met with valley developers. We have huddled up our volunteer team. They're the ones that spent their time to visit and go through that questionnaire with representatives from Precision, Seekins, Precision, or other companies like that. So they get the first look at the findings to make sure that we are communicating what they discovered during that interview process. Probably by the end of the month, or probably by the beginning of next month, we'll come back to this body after I share the findings with my board of directors and tell everybody what we found. Okay? As our commitment, we shared that in terms of the process, and now we're getting ready to look. So I'm not going to spend too much more time here. Here's our accomplishments for 2024, 2023, and 2025. It's important to understand that by springtime, summer, we'll have our third annual meeting. And every year with Supreme leading the charge, we'll have an even bigger event than we did last year. So with that being said, I certainly appreciate your time and effort. I'll take any questions that you might have. And if you can't, if you don't have any questions for me, you think of something afterwards, you all know how to get ahold of me, so you can ask us, ask those questions at that particular time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Counselors.
Mayor.
Questions. I got Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. So Jerry, a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
When you mentioned the 18 site tours, does that mean you went to their current location and toured their site?
No. We had companies come into the valley to do a site tour. I go offsite. Those are business meetings. I had 42 of those. Actually had 51, 42, two of those were qualified meetings. But we brought, we hosted companies in the LC Valley 18 times in the almost two and a half years that I've been here.
Follow up. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
The other one was, when you mentioned a letter of intent.
Yes, sir.
So could you explain that?
Yeah.
What their intent is to do what?
Letter of intent means it's a gentleman's agreement between the company and Valley Vision, where we're going to try to negotiate a deal. And that letter of intent says we're going to have a gentleman's agreement that we're, we're not going to try to look at other communities and trying to strike a deal. We're going to focus in on the LC Valley. And we do the same thing with them. So it's a, it's a methodology in terms of how we're, we're getting them to a point where we're actually having serious conversations about what their incentive package would look like if they were to come to the valley. Thank you.
Counselor Forstman.
Great questions, by the way.
Jerry, can you just give a, just a brief explanation to the public that might be listening, the reason for being discreet for the businesses that are coming to look into our area?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. We engage in NDAs, non-disclosure agreements. And particularly companies are very careful about their expansion. They don't want their competitors, right, to know what they're doing. They may be trying to increase market share by moving to a different location. They may be leaving a location because the cost of business is too high, but they don't want, they don't want their competitors to know what they're doing until they get ready to make their own announcement. It's much par for the course for Northwest Forest Light. At some point, they said, hey, we want everybody to know, but we aren't going to, we don't want that information disclosed until we're ready to disclose it. So it's, it's a bit of the process of economic development, but it's something that we pay attention to. Great question.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. So Jerry, with the current federal new administration, there seems to be a big push of businesses moving into the US. Do you, are you starting to see any of that? Any more interest in stuff from outside the country?
Yes. So maybe not so much in Mexico. We were just returned from Mexico, but definitely Canada. Canada, companies north of the border, they are going to try to figure it out. And, and what I mean by that, I just got back from Vancouver just this past weekend, and there was a lot of conversations about them not waiting for tariff conversations to finalize. And here's a nuance, which you'll find the majority of Canadian companies, they're moving product back and forth before they finish their product and then come back and sell it. So obviously, if they can reduce their transportation costs and move that raw product just to a location in the US, it works better for them at the end of the day. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors? Jerry, I'm, I'm going to ask.
Yes, sir.
Before you step down, I would like to ask you to please introduce your board members that are here tonight, because I don't want to presume that everybody knows who they are, that they know who we are. So as a courtesy, please, you would just introduce them for us.
I will start off with ladies first. If I could just have two stand up. Retired business owner, Supreme. Dave Packey, retired from Regents. He's my vice chair. And we'll just go down the list. Everybody knows Brian Shin, Soan County Commissioner. Mike Thompson, Commissioner for the Board of Lewiston. Last but not least, we have Nikolai Green, representing Nespera's tribe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. And I know Nikolai's got a lot of exciting projects going on, too, so thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, I forgot to mention that one board member that isn't here is actually up there, and that's.
Counselor Forstman, if anyone knew.
There you go. So we actually have a board member that's a city representative on our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you very much. Thank you. And Counsel, I got to tell you, and maybe those listening at home, I've had the opportunity to work with Cherry on several projects, and I've just been impressed with his work, the quality of his work products. And I'm excited about the opportunities that he's going to create for the valley here, the entire valley, not just Lewiston, but Lewiston, Clarkson, and Lakeway, and our partners tribal enterprise. So just very excited for these opportunities. They are coming. There's good things happening in the city, so we're excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your investment, Counsel, your investment, I think, is yielding some big results for us. So I do believe that. Okay, our next presentation. Thank you, Clara.
Thank you.
Financial report for the past five months ending February 20, 2025, in accordance with Idaho Code Title 50, Chapter 2, Article 8. No oral report unless you have questions. If not, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, Roman numeral 5. All items on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless Counsel's request, in which case the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered on the Act of Agenda under items moved from the Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
Counselor Schroder.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Wright, to approve the Consent Agenda. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Cleaver.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forstman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counselor, for a move to Roman numeral 6, Act of Agenda, Item A, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments, and in one Compensation Review Committee, considering appointing Sunshine Cyber, Bob Lakey and Hannah Littke to terms ending December 31, 2025 pursuant to City Code Section 2-42, Sub A, Sub 4. This is an action item, and I will nominate each of these separately. I move to approve the appointment of Sunshine Cyber to a term ending December 31, 2025 on the Compensation Review Committee.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, second by Counsel Schroder, to approve the appointment of Sunshine Cyber to a term ending December 31, 2025 on the Compensation Review Committee. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Thank you. I move to approve the appointment of Bob Lakey to a term ending December 31, 2025 on the Compensation Review Committee.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, second by Counsel Forstman, to approve the appointment of Bob Lakey to, to a term ending December 31, 2025 on the Compensation Review Committee. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you. I move to approve the appointment of Hannah Littke to a term ending December 31, 2025 on the Compensation Review Committee.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, second by Counsel Schroder, to approve the appointment of Hannah Littke to a term ending December 31, 2025 on the Compensation Review Committee. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, we have Item 2 Cemetery and Urban Forestry Advisory Commission, considering appointing Maxine Miller to a three-year term. This is an action item, and before I do that, I will tell you, Counsel, that I had a wonderful conversation with Maxine. We talked about the Cemetery and Urban Forestry Commission, some of the needs that are still out there, some of the items that they would like to focus on, and I've committed to work with them on that. But very happy to, to have Maxine back on. I move to approve the appointment of Maxine Miller to a three-year term on the Cemetery and Urban Forestry Advisory Commission.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, second by Counsel President Cleaver, to approve the appointment of Maxine Miller to a three-year term on the Cemetery and Urban Forestry Advisory Commission. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries. Thank you, counsel. Next up, Item 3 Code Board of Appeals, considering appointing Sean Turpin to a three-year term. Again, I visit with Sean and found him very pleasant, and I think would add a lot to this Code Board of Appeals. Also, they don't meet very often, but when they do, I'm confident that he and the other members would do a great job. I move to approve the appointment of Sean Turpin to a three-year term on the Code Board of Appeals.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, second by. It's been moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Schroder, to approve the appointment of Sean Turpin to a three-year term on the Code Board of Appeals. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Host? Carries. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have Roman numeral six B, Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero four, concerning approving a mutual assistance compact between the City of Lewiston, Idaho and the City of Moscow, Idaho, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign in the test respectively said compact. This is an action item. Counselors? Counselor Schroder?
Is it too early for a motion?
Motion's in order.
Okay. I move to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero four.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman, to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero four. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counselor, next, we move to Roman numeral six C, Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero five, concerning approving an interlocal agreement for mutual aid between the City of Lewiston and Washington State University Police Department, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign in the test respectively said agreement. This is an action item. Our police chief is here with the site. Otherwise, I entertain a motion. Counselor Klein?
May I just ask a question?
Chief Cusack? Please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Jason Cusack, Chief of Police.
Hi. I was just wondering, with these mutual agreements, how, how often do we get in a situation where we actually, like, would need the help of the WSU Police Department?
Not often. The only time we've really been requested in, say, the last twelve months was one time for a, an armed barricade up in Moscow. But from WSU, in the two and a half years I've been here, we haven't requested assistance from either from us, from them, or them from us. So, yeah, it's just, but situations arise where enough proximity. Where the advantage of the MOU for this is, is the SWAT team, really. That's where the force multiplier is. They have their own SWAT teams up there, but there are sometimes needs where two teams have to be on scene. So, we just have this mutual aid and vice versa. We could be in a situation where sometimes it's even a long standoff, we need relief and vice versa. So, that's kind of the primary tool, I think, that would be utilized if the request was needed.
That was just kind of my biggest concern with this one, is whether, whether it seems kind of like this would be lopsided, right? Because it feels like they'd need our help more than we would need their help in most situations. And so, since there's not, like, a financial agreement attached to it, I'm not sure how fair it is to the citizens of Lewiston that they're, you know, they're paying for, they'd be paying for more mutual aid, you know, more assistance, like.
Yeah. And I can't really say how, if it feels lopsided or not. It's, it's just, i-if we called the assistance of WSU or vice versa, it's going to be a pretty significant event. So, yeah.
Chief Cusack? Isn't it also true that you would have to have the resources available? If you didn't have them, we wouldn't respond.
Correct. And even if we had them, it's built into the, we don't necessarily have to respond. The on-duty commander here in Lewiston could just not respond or just say we can't send resources. But ultimately, we'd have to have the resources available to even send, correct?
Counselor Forstman?
What would be the risk if we had some catastrophic event that did require us to need their assistance and we didn't have this agreement in place?
I kind of missed it from front end of that.
So, if we didn't have this understanding in place, and we just chose not to do this, and then some catastrophic event happened that we did need to assist each other, what would happen? What is the risk there?
Well, they would still probably reach out, and then we would just have to make a decision if we were still going to risk. But without the MOU, it gives us some, I guess, protections, for lack of a better term, about an understanding that even if our resources respond up to that area, we still control that resource. And then that understanding is built into it. And that even if at any point there, we feel that this is not what we agreed to come out and assist you with, we could pull our resources back. And it, we just kind of have that language in there to give us a little more protection for our resources and our officers and our equipment to either respond or not respond, or pull back at that, at that point, if we get up there and realize this is not, this is not what we, if we feel the situation's beyond what we want to assist with.
Thank you.
Counselor Schroder?
Move to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero five.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Wright, to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero five. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Thank Chief Clerk, or Chief Cusack and Clerk Rocky. Next up, we have, yeah, I'm going to mix it up here. That's just to see if you guys were listening. All right, let's try this again. Those of you that work closely with me know that I'm losing. Okay, item D, Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero seven, concerning approving a restrictive covenant consent to transfer for the new transfer, transfer stop facility near the Lewiston Community Center, restricting uses to those consistent with ITD Grant Funding Agreement Twenty Twenty dash Zero Nine, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign in the test respectively said restrictive covenant. Counselors? Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero seven.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Klein, to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero seven. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Next up, we have item E, Irrevocable Consent to Annexation Utility Service Agreement, considering approving an irrevocable consent to annexation utility service agreement between the City of Lewiston and Alan Franklin Kirk and Michelle Payton Kirk, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item. Counselors? Counselor Schroder?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Give him the dust stare. Get him.
The Works Director, Dustin Johnson, we didn't get a signature on that one, so please don't sign that.
Okay. We'll be back. Do we need to do anything, or we just pretend it's not there, basically?
We'll bring it on, put it on another agenda.
Okay.
This is Jennifer Tangano, City Attorney. You could do a motion to table the matter until the next regular city council meeting, or you can elect to just do nothing at this point.
Okay.
Jennifer, counselors, next up, we have, Jen, item F, Lewiston Orchard Sewer District Interagency Agreement, concerning approving the interagency agreement between the Lewiston Orchard Sewer District and the City of Lewiston, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign in a test respectively the agreement. This is an action item. Counselor Schroder?
I would like to make a motion to approve the inter-agency agreement between the Lewiston Orchard Sewer District and the City of Lewiston, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Council President Kleberg, to approve the interagency agreement between the Lewiston Orchard Sewer District and the City of Lewiston, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, under the active agenda of Roman numeral six G, ordinances, number one, second and third readings, item A, ordinance forty-nine, twenty-one, concerning repealing and reserving Section Thirty-seven dash One Twenty-Nine of Lewiston City Code entitled Use of Prefabricated Containerized Transport Units as Accessory Buildings or Storage Units, and amending Section Thirty-seven dash One Thirty-One of Lewiston City Code, allowing use of shipping containers as an accessory building. This is an action item. Counsel? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, so, I did receive a few emails on this topic today, and they were from people concerned with this. And it was, their concern was the aesthetics, or the, how it would look in a next-door property or nearby property. One of the things I, I did send out, I didn't get a positive feedback back about it, but was some sort of compromise where, you know, possibly would require a signature of your nearest neighbors to have one of these. The, at least the one email that I had got back before I needed to get to the meeting, they did not like that idea. The preference was more that it just doesn't get approved. But I felt I should just share that. It was three, three residents that sent very similar emails to that nature.
Thank you, counselor. Comments? Counselor President Kleberg?
Like Counselor Wright, I've also received many emails, and most of them were against this. But I will say that the number of phone calls I received far outweighed the number of emails. I don't know really what the difference there is, but I could tell you, I had more phone calls in favor. In fact, I don't think I had a single phone call against. And, so, I guess, where it stands, and people talking about, you know, how it's going to look, you know, next to my house. Unfortunately, the only time you get to pick your neighbors, and I learned this a long time ago, they buy your house. Because in five days, the guy next door might sell it, and you have a new neighbor. So, with that, might come a whole different change of decor for the yard, if you will. I would like to see where we could have some sort of requirement on, at least having a rust-free painted, looking way decent. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but if somebody wants to buy a ten-by-twenty shed, they can go buy a ten-by-twenty shed, put it up in their backyard. It's not even an issue. That's essentially what these containers are. So, I guess I'm going to support it.
Mayor?
Counselor Forstman?
Could make an amendment to the motion, correct, as far as aesthetics go and having, you know, rust and curb appeal, if it felt so, or maybe not. I don't know.
We're getting an answer.
Counsel, I'm going to ask that we make sure we speak into these microphones clearly, because this is, I know there's a lot of folks that are interested in the topic, and we want to make sure that they can hear us at home. Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. City councilors, Jennifer Tangano, City Attorney. The way that the current ordinance is worded, it does not provide an opportunity to regulate the aesthetics of it at this point. The council is able to tailor City Code as appropriate, so there is always the opportunity to do so. The primary question would then become, who within the city would regulate that, and in what manner would it be regulated? Particularly when you're concerned about the appear, the physical appearance of a particular structure, because this particular item is going to be listed under accessory buildings, the question would also be, are you also going to regulate the aesthetics of other accessory buildings, including that ten-by-twenty wood shed or other types of accessory buildings that would also fall under the same category? Or if you're just going to limit to these shipping containers? And then the, the various discussions and community input you'd want to collect as a part of that particular process?
Counselor Forstman?
With regards to if we just focused on the storage containers for aesthetics, what risk are we running by only singling that out and not, you know, detached garage or a garden shed?
Without straying too much in the world of legal advice, generally, a concern would be raised about singling out a particular type of structure, and whether or not your decision to regulate those is arbitrary, capricious, and without foundations in law. So, whether or not you're being too specific and discriminating against a particular type of building or structure, just because it's a different type. Thank you.
Counselor Klein?
I just have a comment. As far as where I'm seeing this, is that a lot of people that have concerns about this, they are concerned that now, you know, their neighbor doesn't have one, and all of a sudden, all these people all over town are going to go, go out buying, buying these shipping containers and putting them in their yard. But most people in town don't even know that they're not allowed. And so, there's, I know of two different companies in town that already sell shipping containers for storage. So, if it, I feel like I don't see it being an issue as far as now everybody's going to go buy, go.
Oh, dear.
It's fine. Go buy a bunch of shipping containers. It's just making what we already have legal, and not, not finding people or getting on these people that already have them. That financial matter. You've got, you know, over two hundred shipping containers, they said, all over town, that people, that's, that's what they wanted, compared to the amount of letters that we've gotten that are copy and paste, saying that they don't want them just because they don't like looking at them. And I feel like a person's property is a person's property to an extent, right? And they should be able to do it. They want to, within reason.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Schroder?
Jennifer, the, there's nothing in code today that says anything about an auxiliary building that's put out there that has to be pretty, correct?
Not something to the degree that the council has strayed away from in other areas. So, if you recall, you recently updated the City Code regarding small lot development and the aesthetic requirements for those particular developments, with the city being a bit more adverse to creating aesthetic requirements and allowing for more variability and auctions for private developers when you're developing small lots of ten or more units, I believe it was. I can't remember the exact number, but I know it was specific to small lot, small lot development and the concerns about private property rights in favor of private property holders and less regulation from the city. Whereas this particular, the way that this particular ordinance is currently drafted, it was revised from a prior version that had more regulation to it, again, in the desire of less regulation from the city and encouraging more private property rights by allowing homeowners to choose whether or not to have these units to begin with. And so, as far as other areas of City Code, we do have aesthetic provisions, but not specific to this, and not necessarily aesthetics that are no rust or something to that effect. It's to make sure that it, it fits in more with the neighborhood, so that you don't have those clashing, you know, like in Normal Hill, you have your old Craftsman style, and you're not going to have a modernized, all-glass, three-story building kind of situation.
Counselor Wright?
I would like to add, in responding to the, the residents that were, that had concerns with the shipping containers, I did share with them my point of view, which is leaning toward the private property rights over aesthetics, and that I was in favor of storage units. And it's the same idea that was just stated previously about our, our past decisions. I do, of course, have some exception to that when it comes to historical areas or the Normal Hill area in particular. But in my opinion, and if you, if you don't want storage units, or if you want things to look a particular way in your neighborhood... want things to look a particular way in your neighborhood, uh, that seems more in the area of HOAs than, um, the city council. And, and respectfully, that's summarized how I explained my opinion to citizens.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Mayor. So I guess for me, I'm getting a little lost in this. We've talked about this way too many times, but I thought we'd already approved the removal of the restriction and the acceptance of the, um, storage units. And isn't this just identifying, um, what order number, where it's gonna sit? This is going on forever.
Counselor Spicklemeyer. A response for you. Um, thank, thank Idaho Code for that. So, uh, the Idaho Code Title 67, Chapter 65 regulates the city zoning code, and this particular section falls within the city zoning code. And the reason why this feels like it's been going on forever, because I think it has been going on for the better part of a year, um, because the way that Idaho Code is written, all of our code amendments have to have a public hearing at minimum in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I don't recall exactly when this came up. Uh, I have it roughly in June of last year, but that might have been after it already went to zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, but you, we have to hold a public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so you have to go through all the notices associated with that. And then you have, um, their recommendation to the city council, and then we typically hold another public hearing, which then goes for, um, publication and those public notices so that the public can provide comment. And when it originally came before you, it had different language that was proposed, and the city council, um, opted to not proceed with that language in favor of, um, more generalized language and to classify it as an accessory building and in also in favor of reducing any permit requirements, aesthetics and, and other, um, uh, more specific regulation for these. That then had to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission because what was being proposed by the city council was materially different than what the Planning and Zoning Commission had originally based their decision and had their public hearing and recommendation on. So they held another public hearing and allowed for additional public comment, at which point the Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded their recommendation to you again. And for the sake of this particular version of the code having come from the city council, we opted not to do a fourth public hearing because we've already had three public hearings at minimum, in addition to several work sessions discussing this particular amendment. And this is the most generalized, less, or least regulatory that we could get that still allows people to make an, uh, decision for their personal property, whether or not they want to have these. Um, there are, ultimately, because these are being classified as accessory buildings, there are still some restrictions. So if their lot's not big enough for an accessory building, then potentially they wouldn't be able to have one there. Um, but otherwise, it allows an individual to make the decision for themselves based on city code on whether or not they would like to have one of these at, at their property. But it has taken forever.
Counselor Klein.
Motion to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on 10 different days and to combine the second and third.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counselor Schroder, to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days and to combine the second and third readings. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries? Counselor Klein.
Motion to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4921 and approve the reading of ordinance number 4921 by title only.
Been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counselor Schroder, to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4921 and approve the reading of ordinance number 4921 by title only. Is there further discussion or amendments?
Mayor.
Counselor, uh, Forssman.
Just a comment. I also received, um, maybe three or four emails throughout this process of going through this. And originally it came up, um, I have received emails that we shouldn't be rewarding those that weren't listening to the law in the first place. It was actually more of the fact that they were unaware, unaware that it was not allowed to have shipping containers. And then, then it being that it did not get brought to attention until code enforcement was called, and then now we're aware that they're out there. Um, and so that would have resulted in us going to all these homeowners that already have them and letting them know that they're outside of code. But again, this is their property, and we do have some provisions in place. If I remember correctly, they can't just put it in the front of their house. Um, it has to be a certain lot size, so it's not like it's a free all, put it wherever you want. Um, and there was also comments about being able to rent out storage units because we have plenty around. They also pay their property taxes, and according to a lot of Lewiston's, citizens of Lewiston, they pay high property taxes. So for us to further restrict what they are able to do on their property within reasonable accommodation, I find would be unfair. Although I do understand that certain things aren't slightly to look at, depending on the person that lives next door. Um, it is their property, and as long as there's no health or risk to the citizens, don't see why we can't accommodate.
Thank you, Counselor Forssman. Counselors, we're voting on a motion to waive the third reading in full of ordinance 4921 and approve the reading of ordinance 4921 by title only. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries, Clerk Brockie.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4921. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston repealing and reserving section 37 dash 129 of the Lewiston City Code entitled "Use of Pre-Fabricated Containerized Transport Units as Accessory Buildings or Storage Units" and amending section 37 dash 131 of the Lewiston City Code allowing use of shipping containers as an accessory building and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Counselors, uh, we now move to, uh, G12, Adoption and Approval of Ordinance Sumaries. Item A, Ordinance 4921. Counselor Klein.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 4921 and approve the related ordinance summary.
Been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counselor Schroder, to adopt ordinance number 4921 and approve the related ordinance summary. Clerk Brockie.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forssman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Next, we move to Roman numeral seven. We'll actually move to Roman numeral eight. Unfinished and new business. Item A, City Council comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the city council or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future. It shall be limited to comments, not discussion.
Mayor.
Counselor Klein.
Girl scout cookie season. Got my envelope. Support, support the girls.
Counselor, Counselor Forssman.
So, before March is up, I'll make sure I say this. Uh, March is National Women's Month. In 1987, Congress declared March as National Women's History Month. In perpetuity, a special president proclamation is issued every year, which honors the extraordinary achievements of American women. President Jimmy Carter's message to the nation's designating March 2nd through the 8th, 1980 as National Women's History Week. Um, so in light of that, as the month's almost over, I want to thank all those women out there that are making change and raising our, uh, children to hopefully be successful, loving people. And I honor women this month and continue to make a, make moves and make changes.
Thank you, Counselor. Further counsel comments? Okay. City boards and commissions, we have some updates. Counselor Wright.
I, I did meet with the, uh, Disability Advisory Committee Board. We were, the, the main thing we were doing was getting ready for the view that's, that's coming up. Uh, one thing that was mentioned, which I haven't had a chance yet to follow up with the, the, uh, the Rex Department, but I, I will, was a, uh, push button on the community center door that for, uh, disabled or handicapped people to get that door to open automatically. There's not one on the community center, and there was concern raised that, um, that, you know, community events are held there, voting is held there, and it didn't seem, um, proper not to have it handicap accessible. So I, I will follow up with the Rex Department on that. But that's all I had.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schroder.
Uh, yes, we had our regular meeting for the, uh, Public Works Advisory Commission on March 19th. Um, it was a very short meeting. We had an election of officers. And, um, other than that, I don't think we had much of anything, except May 22 is, um, Public Works Day, correct? The 22nd? So that is so much fun. You take your kids, you go there. It is, there is so much for the kids to do. It's an amazing, it's an amazing place. And that's at the Fair Building, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. So, uh, be sure and put that on your calendar and take your little ones. They love it there.
Mayor.
Counselor Forssman.
I'm just gonna echo off of Counselor Schroder. As far as Public Works Day, um, I have taken my kiddo the last two years. Um, and that's actually last year I took my niece and nephews to, and I took them out in the middle of school and made sure that they went to that. And then I got ahold of the principal of the school and the teacher and asked why they are not participating in this, uh, event, since it is our city. And, um, it's good for our kids to know our infrastructure and how treating our water system is important. And now I'm hearing Lewiston schools are now, uh, participating. I'd like to say that was for me, but I actually don't know. But I'm glad that they are, whatever the reason may be. I'm glad that some of them are choosing, choosing to go to this because there is a lot of other cities surrounding that come to it, and Lewiston hasn't, uh, historically come the last couple of years. So I think it's important that they come to what directly affects the city. So I'm excited to, for that. And I will be going again this year.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Mayor. Um, the Parks and Rec Commission met on Wednesday, um, reviewed the revised Jewett Park lease contract, and they have passed on their recommendation to the mayor, which I think he'll be bringing to the council soon. Um, they're still working on their master plan, which will include their recommendations for Benton Gym and the Burt Lips Pool.
Counselor Klein.
Um, so the airport meeting, I wasn't able to attend, but, um, upon reviewing the, um, the agenda or the, the minutes and the, the video, um, yeah, the city wasn't able to guarantee EMS support during flights, um, which is an FAA regulation. So, um, the airport will be taking that on and making sure that their firefighters are, are, uh, qualifying for that. Um, Airport Park was going through, um, an appraisal. They're gonna go through an appraisal for that to better figure out a lease amount. Um, and then the city proposed an $80,000 lease based on 2023 appraisal, but the airport decided to proceed with the 90,000 lease amount that was budgeted.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Mayor comments. Um, a couple of them here. First of all, I'd like to thank Director Johnson and all the city staff for their hard work on our open houses to, uh, let the public know about the upcoming, uh, bond vote on May 20th. Um, we have a few more planned. Uh, I would encourage you, counselors, uh, when you're out and about in the community, make sure that, um, folks understand what this is all about, or direct them to city staff, and we can get them the information they might need. I will be serving on the Cemetery Urban Forest Street Commission. We have a meeting tomorrow night. Uh, we finished our appointments tonight, so we have a full board. We can go back and have our meetings. We'll be working on, uh, several items, but, uh, my primary charge is to work on an update to the cemetery master plan, which, um, slowly I'm working on, but I will get there. I would also like to give a shout out to Julie Slider, if I pronounce that name right, who, uh, recently earned a national championship, uh, at the AF SW Junior Focus Al National Championship in Des Moines, Iowa, a wrestler. One of our local students, uh, won a national championship. So that's, uh, quite an accomplishment and certainly, uh, uh, what she's been referred to as a trailblazer for girls wrestling in the state of Idaho. So big shout out to her. City of Lewiston is proud of her accomplishment, I know. So. Item 8D Agenda Topics. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to add the Brighton Avenue and Brighton Canyon Maintenance Repair Plan to the future agenda.
Could you repeat that for me, Counselor?
Brighton Avenue and Brighton Canyon Maintenance and Repair Plan.
I'll second on that. I'm, I'm kind of confused exactly what we're looking for. I'm, I'm seconding it though, for just a discussion.
It's been moved by Counselor Spicklemeyer, second by Counselor Forssman, to add to a future meeting, um, the topic of Brighton Avenue and Brighton Canyon Construction Maintenance. Counselors, a courtesy to you, I'm gonna ask if you have a date in mind or just a timeframe.
Um, I, I don't.
Upcoming meeting.
Okay.
We'll get it on there. Okay. Um, again, it's been moved by Counselor Spicklemeyer, second by Counselor Forssman, to add to a future agenda, the topic of Brighton Avenue, Brighton Canyon Construction Maintenance. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Under. Other agenda topics. Okay. Roman numeral nine, the Jordan Mintz.
Moved to a Jordan.
Aye.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Council President Kleberg, to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.